And now call the order to the April twenty second, two thousand and twenty five Board of Trustees meeting. Time being six thirty P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This clerk may get a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon, trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Moyer.
Here.
Trustee Teetz. Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Mayor Proten Mason.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Mayor, you do have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? No. Are there any conflicts of interest with the agenda this evening? No. Okay. We're going to move on some proclamations here. The first proclamation will be for recognizing Arbor Day. Those in attendance that are going to be accepting this, please come forward and then I'll present to you. We'll take a photo. Mr. McConnell. All right, so whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of topsoil, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, leaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And wherever planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Kayla Shosse, Mayor of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby recognize and encourage the celebration of Arbor Day in the Town of Wellington and urge all fellow residents to celebrate and support the efforts to protect trees and encourage citizens to strategically plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Hereunto, set my hand, cause the seal of Town of Wellington to be affixed this twenty-second day of April, two thousand and twenty-five.
Accepting the proclamation is Aaron McConnell from Rose.
Oh, yes. I said, Mr. McConnell.
Oh, did you?
I'm sorry. I called him up and then I, yeah.
All right, next we have Volunteer Appreciation Week. So whereas volunteerism is an essential part of our community's fabric with individuals selflessly giving their time, talents and energy to improve the lives of others and strengthen our town. Whereas volunteers in the Town of Wellington contribute in countless ways, supporting local organizations, assisting in emergency response, mentoring youth, enhancing public spaces and bringing comfort and care to those in need. And whereas the contributions of volunteers embody the spirit of civic engagement and community pride, inspiring others to take action and make a difference. And whereas Volunteer Appreciation Week offers a dedicated time to honor and celebrate the tireless efforts of our local volunteers who uplift our town through acts of kindness, compassion and service. Whereas by recognizing our volunteers, we affirm the importance of service and express our deepest gratitude to those who give generously. Now, therefore, I, Kayla Shosse, Mayor of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby recognize and encourage the celebration of Volunteer Appreciation Week and encourage all citizens to recognize, celebrate and thank the volunteers who make the meaningful impact in our community each and every day. While we all have been inspired, may we all be inspired to serve and support one another in the spirit of unity and goodwill. I witness thereof, hereunto, set my hand, cause the seal of Town of Wellington to be affixed this twenty-second day of April, two thousand and twenty-five. We got one more here. Small, National Small Business Week. So whereas small businesses serve as an engine for our economy and the foundation of our local community, employing nearly half of all private sector workers and contributing to the vitality and diversity of every industry. And whereas the Town of Wellington recognizes the resilience, determination and innovation of small business owners who, through hard work and perseverance, create opportunities, strengthen neighborhoods and enrich the fabric of our community. Whereas, small businesses comprise ninety-nine point nine percent of all business in the United States and are responsible for nearly forty percent of our national economic output, providing goods and services that support our daily lives. And whereas, small business owners demonstrate the values of courage, commitment and entrepreneurship, and their success stories serve as an inspiration and testament to the American spirit of possibility and progress. Whereas, National Small Business Week offers an opportunity to celebrate and support these enterprises and to recognize the vital role they play in driving innovation, fostering job creation and contributing to the prosperity of the Town of Wellington. Now, therefore, I, Kayla Shosse, Mayor of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby recognize and encourage the celebration of National Small Business Week in the Town of Wellington. And I urge all of our citizens to support local business, acknowledge their contributions and participate in activities that celebrate the entrepreneurial spirit and sustains our community. I hereunto, set my hand, cause the seal of Town of Wellington to be affixed to this, the twenty-second day of April, two thousand and twenty-five.
Now will be time for public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak. Non-agenda items will be given three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, trustees. My name's Eric Sutherland. I live in Fort Collins. Two topics that I'd like to discuss this evening. The first is, I don't know, statements that were made by the Pooter School District, this school in back many years, how a guy named Eric Sutherland held up the construction of Wellington Town Middle School and High School. Those statements were all patently false. They're false on their face. And if anybody would like to share their recollection of how they might have learned of the cause of the delay that kept Wellington from getting its badly needed high school for over a year, please let me know. I bring those forward because there is going to be quite a bit of financial stress in the Pooter School District going forward. And awareness by your community of the importance of keeping your schools adequately funded probably will be beneficial going forward because there's going to be pressure all the way around. Similar vein, my second topic here, area of public finance, I was in attendance when you had your work session last week. Consultant talking about various means of increasing revenues for the Town of Wellington. There's a lot that I might augment to that, which I will do an email, pretty complicated, heady stuff. But there's one particular subject that I'd like you to consider this evening, and that's tax dollars that your residents, your property owners are paying that are funding the Town of Timmish. It's a strange mathematical aberration, but it's actually true. Every property owner in the Town of Wellington, every property owner in the entire school district is paying six tenths of a mil of money that due to the way that Pooter School District calculates its sales tax and Timmish abuses of urban renewal tax increment financing ends up in Timmish coffers. What does that mean? Well, for like my house, you might remember that the General Assembly granted us some property tax relief. That on my house amounted to about a hundred dollars. Well, the amount that I am also spending, paying into the system to backfill PSD's revenues lost to the Town of Timmish is fifty dollars. It's about half. And you just multiply that by every single house in the district, it ends up being a very large number. Town of Timmish tonight, guys, they're holding their town hall in a brand new city hall, paid with tens of millions of dollars diverted from public entity tax revenues. It's probably the most crooked thing I've ever seen nationwide. All because twenty years ago, Town Board decided to declare thousands of acres of agricultural land to be urban bilt, thereby making, taking advantage of the state's urban renewal law, which was actually legislated to create.
Yeah, thank you very much, your time today, guys.
Good evening. My name's Curtis Bridges, and I wasn't really planning on talking, but after our previous person, I'm the guy who owned the land where the school is. And that whole process took three years, trust me, at my kitchen table to become completed. And Eric Sutherland, with all of his actions and everything, delayed it, caused constant problems, et cetera. We are blessed to have the school. It's beautiful and everything else, but Eric Sutherland, thank goodness, we don't hear about him anymore. But trust me, he's one of the guys that put roadblocks in our way to get this accomplished in three years. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Carol Bennis from the Chamber of Commerce was here to accept the small business proclamation. Could we potentially do a little photo op so we could have something?
I am so sorry.
Thank you so much.
I was, I couldn't, sorry.
And I didn't say anything, so I apologize. Small business. Yay.
Thank you, Patty. Okay, next we have a presentation from, for our library quarterly update. Ross La Genaise will be presenting.
You did it. Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees and those that are watching at home. My name is Ross La Genaise. Sorry, it's sliding. And tonight I wanted to talk to, I only have good news. I wanted to talk about a few things. I wanted to take just today. We all talk about all the hats that we wear. It's a small town and I have an overreaching theme tonight about connection. So just today, I always have my accoutrements. I wore the hat of a, I wore the hat of a Storytime firefighter, firefighter. So we had Storytime, one hat. Possibly had some plumbing issues and we had some cleanup out front. That was a hat I wore. And I'm going to wear our summer reading program hat. So all of these hats create connection in our town. Connection is circular. We are very, very connected to our residents and our patrons. We know all of their names. We are also connected to Colorado State Programs, Larimer County Departments, Programs, Nonprofits. We are intently connected now to the Town of Wellington Departments. We depend on every department in order to help us be successful. And our library team and its Volunteer Appreciation Week. We have about forty-five volunteers that help the library. So the numbers I'm going to share with you tonight on the Public Library Annual Report is because of all of these connections. And especially, I want to shout out to my team. The things I ask them to do, they go above and beyond, and they love being at the library. I am so proud of the entire team. So I want to talk a little bit about PLAR. It's called PLAR. It's the Public Library Annual Report. I have to report to the state every single year. Again, these are raw numbers, plus or minus point one percent for human error. The first one I want to talk about is our total registered users. So that is new patrons every, every year. We, in two thousand and twenty-four, we gained five hundred and new patrons. That's on top of the patrons. That is one new patron, one new person in our library every four point eight hours of operating. Every four point eight hours. That's pretty good for a rural library. Our physical item circulation, that's what's going in and out, we increased ten percent. Our total circulation for everything which includes media, eBooks, it was a fourteen percent increase. The number of uses of public internet in our library is sixteen percent. The number of one-on-one appointments increased by eighty-five percent. The number of individuals directly engaged, WPL, to a person was a sixty-one percent increase. Number of individuals exposed to the library, seventy-two percent increase. Those are very conservative numbers. It's very hard when we do an event, there are so many people. You have to kind of gauge those. We use little clickers. The interlibrary loan, I want to point out, interlibrary load, these are items that we provide to other libraries was a thirty-four percent increase. That means what we have here in our rural library, other large libraries want. I know. Also, our interlibrary loan where we receive from other libraries, twenty-nine percent increase. So there's a give and take. Colorado is a sharing library. I'm always so proud to see these numbers. Once again, another year where we increased and we came in under budget. So yay, PLAR, we did great. I do want to shift to, ah, my other accoutrement, remember, connection circular, come back, our paradigm shift. The summer reading program is very important. It maintains literacy. Those two to three months in between school levels, literacy levels can drop one to two grades. So libraries doing a summer reading program are very important to keep kids reading, engaged, curious, where they don't drop those levels. This year, again, we're pivoting. We're a smaller library. We pivot every single day. I personally felt uneasy going to businesses and asking for sponsors this year. It's very uneasy financial times. So while we appreciate our sponsors, please continue to support our local businesses. We decided to shift and I went out looking for a community partner. And Human Being has signed on to be our community partner for the summer reading program, and they are providing us sixteen hundred to two thousand drink tickets for prizes for the kids. So they will be our main community partner. We're also bringing many of our events to Centennial Park so that we can be closer to Main Street. When our events are done, I can cheekily push people towards a hamburger or a coffee. Make sure you support our local businesses. We will be bringing events to the Main Street Market, which is now Fri- Sorry, I'll let you talk about it. We will be bringing some events Friday nights to the Main Street Markets in order to support our local businesses. We're very proud. We have developed a collaboration with KRFC, which is eighty-eight point nine on your FM dial. Make sure you listen to them. They're local. We're launching the lyrical literacy series. So I started to think that musicians are adept at literacy. They rhyme, they have cadence, they have poetry, they understand parts of speech, they experiment with language. So all of our performers that we have booked will be during the Main Street Market and during the summer reading program. They are all singer-songwriters, so they've written their own songs so that kids can see, you keep reading, you keep doing this, you can do this as well. So we're super excited about that. We're continuing with the Denver Museum of Nature and Science with their STEM programming. We're adding Colorado Parks and Wildlife. They will be doing an event. We're sticking with the foam party as their closer. And then we are doing Once Upon a Field Day and we're expanding it again this year. Again, we collaborate with every department, so Parks and Rec helps us with that. This Saturday, we have Arbor Day. We'll be doing that. So summer reading program, it's all twos. May second, registration starts. June second, the program starts, and then August second, it ends. Good news. Only good news. I do want to make one final announcement. So this is your, twenty twenty-four was a great year. Again, I just want to lean in on, we increased all numbers. When we asked for a little bit more money for budgets, I tried to return it. We've always had a good return on investment. I do want to announce that we have decided to collaborate with the Wellington Food Pantry. Due to recent funding decreases of fifty percent, Wellington Food Pantry is really struggling. People can't maintain literacy if they can't eat. This is an issue I will really stand hard on. We need our kids and families eating. So we are extended, we're starting, we typically do food for fines towards the end of the season, for the holidays. We are starting right now. We need you to bring in food. Wellington Public Library will be a drop area. They are asking for breakfast items, which makes sense. Kids need to get their brain going for school. Any cereals, oatmeals, dried fruit, mac and cheese, canned foods, rice, pasta. You can go to their website, Wellington CSC, which stands for Community Service Centers. Please bring your food. Your fines will be waived. If you have a twenty-dollar late fine, if you bring in a couple of cans, we will wipe it. Please bring us as much food as possible and feed our community. And that's it. If you have any questions, concerns, things you want to throw out, I'm ready to roll.
Throw some more.
Again, so impressed with you and your team. I think what you've done is amazing and a true testament to the power of partnership and what good can come and how powerful it is when people work together. I love all of the partnerships, in particular, this one with the food bank. I think that's really great. Little story, my oldest was watching, we're supposed to welcome my other two children home from elementary school, and she texted me, I was in a meeting, thinking that they had been kidnapped. Where were they? They were at the library. They love to go to the library after school. They now know to tell us, but the fact that that's where they want to run off to and come and see you and hang out and look at the books and play with all the things, I just love that. And so thank you for bringing that resource and that excitement and enthusiasm to our town and love the numbers. So, thank you.
Trust me.
Just one word, awesome. And I'm glad you still got a little bit of your energy. Thank you.
Trustee Daly.
I'm always impressed that you're really living your vision and everything that you guys do. The connectiveness is always impressive. I always have to touch on the hierarchy of needs that you're talking about. People can't eat, maybe they don't have secure housing or anything like that. You can't flourish if you are defending at all times. So I love that you guys have acknowledged that. Your partnerships between the community and within the town and regionally are very, very impressive because people can do more when you activate all together. So I love to see that. I always receive great feedback and I know you guys are doing a great job and you're a wonderful, safe place to be. Thank you.
Mayor Proten.
Hey, directional. I just got to say, as, as always, I'm just so darn impressed with all the programs you've got going on. You know, the circulation numbers here, all, all increases across the board and you guys are always coming in under budget somehow. I just, I don't know how you do it and I'm just, I'm so darn impressed. So, uh, thank you and I appreciate all the hard work and please tell your staff, you know, we, we appreciate all those guys and, and what you do for the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the team you put together, the people that, that work for the library, that care about the town, our kids and everything you do. It's a, it's a great thing to see the collaboration and all that goes into it and where your heart's at and that's, you know, helping people learn, grow and just become better. So thank you for everything you do.
Of course. Sorry, I just realized on the camera, this is our summer reading program jersey, so kids know, like, come find us at the events. I just realized, like, I look pretty sloppy. You couldn't see the front. Says libraries. We always have a uniform so that kids can see us at an event. If you get lost, come find us. That's why I'm wearing a jersey.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
All right, next we have a presentation. It's going to be the Main Street Quarterly Report. Ms. Caitlin Morris, the Main Street Event Coordinator, is going to present on this.
I have a tough act to follow. Can I use, I hope, maybe I'll use your accoutrement during my presentation. All right, am I sharing right now?
No, Ms. Morris, but you are a panelist, so if you have your PowerPoint up and go to the green share button.
Great. Well, hi, Mayor and trustees, Caitlin Morris. I am excited to give you the first quarter report for two thousand and twenty-five. And I just want to piggyback on Ross's sentiments about connection and it being circular and, I think, reciprocal too. And I think it's a, you know, founding principle of the Main Street Program too. So, you know, that's really the bread and butter of, of how we do our work as well. And I, I think it's great that he could almost present on something that I'm going to present on shortly because we're so very connected in the work that we're doing. So before I dive in, I wanted to just catch up on where, what has happened, you know, since the last time that I saw you. So the last presentation was in December. We did the two thousand and twenty-four annual report. We also presented an updated work plan by quarter that incorporated the strategic plan, the Town of Wellington strategic plan aspects where it aligns with the Wellington Main Street Program's strategic plan. And then we also presented our mini grant plan for approval. So today I wanted to start with some of our statistics on what we've accomplished in quarter one. We've been quite busy and this top statistic here in our, our volunteer hours is, is something I'm very proud of and give so much credit and, you know, appreciation to our board and our committees for accomplishing this. So we, we brought in a little over four hundred hours in quarter one, which has surpassed at least the past two years that I've been in my role. So the engagement and participation is just wonderful and, you know, they're, they're working super hard to get stuff done, which is great. I also wanted to call out that we have already engaged roughly three thousand community members. Like Ross said, you know, that's a, an estimate, you know, based on our St. Patty's Day event and other things that we have had going on. But at least for St. Patty's, we estimated, you know, around twenty-five hundred to three thousand people alone at that event. And then, you know, so proud to have welcomed back Soul Squared to our Main Street this quarter, filling one of our vacant spaces, and then more recently Ghost Dog Deli, who's just doing great. They're doing, they're, they're pretty darn busy. So it's just wonderful to have another food place, you know, to fill one of our vacancies on Main Street. I wanted to just reintroduce our Board of Directors and then add in kind of what everybody's doing on the board. So I know you've, you've met most of these folks, but, so Ms. Blair Peterson, our president, is also managing our Promotions Committee. Emma Payton, our Vice President, does promotions, design and the Main Street Market. Sophia Moore is our Secretary and also on the Main Street Market Committee. Linda Knack is our Treasurer and on the C three, which is the Cleveland Construction Committee. Melanie Murphy is on Design, Main Street Market, C three and Historic Preservation, which we launched this quarter, that committee. Kate Parton is on Design and Historic Preservation. Jane Kincaid is Design, Main Street Market and Mingel on Main. And then Curtis Melker is part of the Historic Preservation and C three. So just wanted to show kind of who has their hands and what and what everybody's working on. So since we saw you last and you were able to approve our, our quarterly work plan, we did have a couple of things added to that. So the St. Patty's Parade and Festival was kind of an ambitious, late in two thousand and twenty-four idea to support our businesses and give them another, you know, hopefully big day before we start construction later this year. The mini grant projects you now see in the work plan, so some district signage, two murals and our shop local marketing campaign. And then a wonderful gift from DOLA as a Main Street community. They are completing a community video for us, just for being a Main Street program. So that's really kicked off this last quarter with doing some interviews and photography and, you know, capturing- and, you know, capturing all the footage that they need to complete that. And then, just in the last week or so, so I didn't make this presentation, but we are doing kind of the first year of the Wellington Middle High School Walk of Fame Project. So, to celebrate our first four-year graduating class, we're looking for sponsorships right now to help pay for a sign for every single graduating senior that will have their photo, their name, their graduating year. There'll be logos for the sponsors that pay for those signs and we'll have them displayed along Main Street during the May Mingle on Main so they can come down and find their sign on Main Street during the mingle. And then, after that, we'll move them over to the track at the school so then they can get them during graduation and take them home as a memento. So, you know, we're heavily supported by Main Street America, the Department of Local Affairs, and the Town of Wellington. So, I just wanted to catch you up on what we've been utilizing out of those support and services. So, recently, Blair and myself attended the National Main Street Now Conference in Philadelphia and just came home with copious notes and resources, templates, connections to put into action. So, we will consolidate those reports and send those out to you. There's just a breadth of information. I found myself feeling like I wish everybody here could go because it would really apply to everyone. I think everybody would get something out of it. So, we were able to do that through our scholarship funding from DOLA. And we also were able to send Kate Parton, our Board Member, to the DCI Conference in the Game in Greeley, along with Trusty Daly. So, you know, tried to really kind of cover our bases of that advanced education and learning to help grow our program and bring back really actionable ideas to put into play. I have been attending a monthly check-in with our DOLA team, you know, asking for advice and assistance on things that we need. So, we have a monthly meeting scheduled, but I'm in touch with them regularly. We talk really frequently about things. They also do a monthly webinar, so I've attended two of those over the past quarter. And then, you know, certainly with the Town of Wellington, we are facilitating our mini-grants funds right now. They helped us, or we collaborated closely with the St. Patty's event and always with the marketing and promotion. So, then I wanted to jump into kind of the buckets of work and, you know, you have the full detail in your packets. I've updated that work plan, but I'll just touch on a couple of the things here. So, we did complete our accreditation again this year. So, we've received word that we are an accredited program with Main Street America, which, you know, just kind of gives us access to more learning and templates and the broader network of communities that are part of that. We've done kind of the standard things. We've had our board meetings, we've completed our monthly financials, approved our budget and our work plan. But we have been focusing a bit on kind of the board, new board, onboarding, orientation and training. So, an additional resource that DOLA provided to us is they gave an orientation presentation to the board, just about Main Street generally, what they can do for us and how we work together. So, this is ongoing. We want to really focus on growing the board, building in a succession plan, you know, really thinking about the future resiliency and sustainability of the program. So, that's something we want to be actively focusing on. And our board retreat is next month. So, Matt Ashby, who we've worked with a lot from Ayers and Associates, will come and facilitate that for us. And a big part of that is focused on what does it mean to be part of a board and how do we work together and, you know, how does that work? Also, part of that retreat, so in the table pending section here, we're gonna be diving into that Friends of the Program model that we've talked about a little bit in the past and making some decisions about that. We'll also talk about our goals and strategies around economic vitality and our transformation strategy, Wellington's front porch, which really is about economic vitality and connection and culture and engagement. And then, also pending right now, but we're really excited to move forward with a volunteer program. So, we've been working on this for a while now, something a little more robust to, you know, celebrate our current volunteers. It's amazing what these people do for the program and the community and start thinking about how we get some of those younger generations involved in it and, you know, part of the fun things that we get to work on. So, more to come on that next quarterly update. On the promotions side of things, we have just tried to really expand our toolbox and the resources that we're using to market and promote the things that we're doing. So, for example, for the St. Patty's event, we did some radio stuff, you know, some podcasts. We tried to really post on all the free calendars that we could, worked with some, you know, local social media influencers to share the event. And so, just trying to get really creative about how we spread the word and make sure that the community and surrounding area knows what's going on. So, that's part of the marketing and communications plan and we'll, you know, apply that to everything that we do throughout the year and just keep building on that. I am so excited to announce to you, so through the Shop Local Marketing Campaign, we hired Slate Communications, a firm out of Fort Collins, and they're also doing the community video for DOLA. So, it's a great tie-in with the Shop Local Campaign. And so, the board picked a slogan and the graphic is here. So, it's Find Your Place in Wellington, but replace place with a number of words. Find your home, find your community, find your love, find your connection, find your favorite restaurant. So, we've already got quite a few of these graphics and templates to use for social media and marketing purposes. So, we'll be able to start kind of going out with this campaign really very soon, in the next month or so. In the Design Committee world, so happy to report that we completed, or we awarded, excuse me, six grants for signs for Main Street businesses. So, as you drive around, you might notice Soul Squared has a brand-new sign, Ghost Dog Deli, OCB, the Wellington Office Suites. So, you know, just love to see that, those refreshed signs and give our businesses that opportunity to really showcase their brand and call people into their businesses. Another exciting project related to the mini-grants is the mural program. So, we've spent quite a bit of time building that out this year, specifically focused on the two murals that we want to complete as part of the mini-grant plan, but also thinking about the existing murals that we have. And a lot of those are kind of timing out in terms of the maintenance agreements and how do we, you know, take care of those long-term to make sure that they last a really long time as an asset of our downtown. So, we've built a lot of that out and we did a call for artists and we've got two, expecting a third submission from artists that will make selections hopefully by the end of this week so that they can start painting May 1st. We've got a pretty tight turnaround. They have to get those completed by the end of June. So, with weather and the rainy month ahead, we're wanting them to get started really soon. But that'll be a fun thing for the community to come down and watch if they want to. And, you know, we have ideas to create some opportunities to meet the artist and take a family photo with the mural and just really engage with the community around that art because, you know, we believe that art drives economic development and culture and connection. So. I mentioned earlier that we did sort of more formally launch our Historic Preservation Committee. So, we've met two or three times now and lots of interest in the community to be involved in this. So, it's really fun to kind of see the potential of how this can grow. So, I wanted to just let you know some of the things that are actively in conversation right now. So, I think I had told you previously about creating an oral storytelling series, which is really kind of a big push around the country. There was lots of talk about this at the conference that we went to in Philadelphia. So, I think, you know, really wanting to just celebrate our roots and how we came to, you know, be where we are and who was involved in that and, you know, not to belabor it, but really going back to connection. I think often it's, you know, it's our history and the stories and the locations that draw us in and make us feel like we belong here, like there's something that we really attach with and belong. We want to do some meetups, so welcoming, you know, local people who have stories or memorabilia to be able to come show and, you know, connect around those things. We'd really like to, we're already in the process of working with the high school and their history program to connect with the students there, to be able to learn from those people, document those stories, you know, maybe contribute to that oral storytelling series. So, we're in the beginning stages of figuring that out. We do already have our existing historic tour, so we just want to celebrate that and make sure that people know about that. So, every event will promote, you know, come and do the historic tour as part of your experience of the event. And, you know, really want to grow that with doing more surveys of additional historic buildings and those can, you know, be added over time to that tour. And then, in the county, historic, Laramie County has a sign program that they're working to standardize signage for historic landmarks across Laramie County. So, we want to get in on that on the early side. We really want to have signage for all of our historic buildings that are on that tour and grow that over time. And so, we're kind of in the early talks with them about what does that mean funding-wise and can we start, you know, designing signs that are in that, you know, that template that they already have. So, the C3 Committee, so I have been collaborating with Kristy Cannon to manage that committee. We started meeting in January. We've met every month, I think twice last month. And it's, you know, it has representatives from the Chamber, the Main Street Program, Main Street business owners and town staff. And so, the conversations have really progressed quickly and we've been able to identify a handful of priorities that we want to focus on, kind of building projects out. So, you know, direct business support, signage, parking, marketing and communications and community engagement during the construction project. So, all of that is really moving along quickly. We feel, we feel like we're ahead of the construction schedule a little bit so that that feels really fun and it's been really collaborative and a great experience. So, I mentioned our St. Patty's event, 2,500 to 3,000 attendees at that. We did fundraise through the town and do sponsorships for the first time for that event. So, we brought in about 2,500 of cash. We'd had some in-kind contributions as well. And we had over 60 local businesses participate in that event. So, it was just an unexpected huge success and everybody's already asking, what's the date for next year? Are we gonna do that again? So, that was fun. And our businesses specifically reported having excellent days and they were packed and had increased sales. So, that was really the goal. Just today, a little while ago, we did the Earth Day Spring Cleanup. So, let's see, we had 32 volunteers and we got rid of 15 bags of trash of stuff downtown and around the library here, from the alleyways, side streets. So, so fun to just see those volunteers, many of which that were our kiddos, came down to clean up downtown. So, happy Earth Day, everyone. And then, as Ross started to mention, we've got our Main Street Markets coming up and we did decide to move those to Fridays this year. We're trying to, you know, Fridays are a really busy day downtown and there's a lot of different things going on that we wanted to partner and collaborate with, like the Mingle on Main. So, we're gonna start them earlier as well. So, typically, we start middle of July, but we're gonna start June 13th and go through late August before school starts. We've just noticed in the past couple of years that once school starts, attendance really drops off and, you know, there's a lot going on at the school. So, we're hoping Friday nights are the sweet spot. We are collaborating with the library and KRFC to produce three nights of our music, which is just a really fun, awesome thing. I think if you don't know about KRFC, they're a very community-minded, hyper-local radio station and they're very interested in being involved in Wellington and, you know, to capitalize on the summer reading program and bring that into the fold as well. We're just really excited for the potential of the outcomes of that. We also are collaborating with the Parks and Rec Department to do a couple summer movies after the markets and working on several others with local entities as well. So, we'll announce that schedule here very soon. And that is all I have for you today. So, happy to take any questions from you.
Thank you. Trisby Moore.
Where are the two murals gonna be?
So, one is on the east side of the Wellington Grill and the other is on the east side of the Rosen Co. and the Nail.
Okay, perfect. I knew you told us in that last meeting, but I couldn't remember. I love the incorporation of the arts, the music, the partnerships, and I love seeing programs grow. And for the first time, having a St. Patty's Day Parade, I was playing all day long. It was so fun. The parade was awesome, like, all of the floats and the energy in the town was really wonderful. There was a lot of just community and, yeah, it was, I think, a beautiful day. So, congratulations on that, especially for a first time, like I said. And thank you to you and your board for all of the work. Can't wait for the markets and the movies and the music.
Thank you. Trisby.
Appreciate all the work you've been doing, the St. Patty's Day Parade and event down there was fantastic. I made it a part of it and it was neat seeing the bagpipes and all that. So, appreciate what you guys did on that. Friends of the Program, I'm glad that you guys are getting into that. I mean, this is a community thing, you know, it's not just Main Street, it's all the businesses in Wellington that we have to be concerned of. And I think with the construction that we're gonna have, you know, we gotta work together on that. And one thing that you need to know, the board here will do anything and everything we have to do to make sure that businesses do as well as we can. I know it's gonna be tough. I was in Fort Collins during some major renovation of the streets down there and businesses suffered. So, we gotta make sure anything and everything we can do to give the opportunity to survive. So, we're behind you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trisby Daly.
I'm so very excited. Imagine brand-new, giant, fresh murals just in time for 4th of July, when everybody's gonna be downtown. It's going to be amazing. It's going to be sometimes the only time people come downtown, that was mentioned at the meeting, and they are gonna be wowed and like, it's not a place that they've even thought of like that before and it's gonna be beautiful. And I'm so, and they're interactive potentially. I'm not giving away any secrets. But it's just really exciting to know that you guys are contributing to the heart and soul of Wellington, which is 4th of July and all of our events that we do. So, not to mention that, the Walk of Fame Sponsorships is intending on welcoming every graduating senior and their families to come to Main Street to find their place and find their celebration there, meaning hundreds of students and their entire families will come upon downtown on one Friday night and again, get to explore. What an amazing idea and what a service you're doing for those students. So that you guys know, it is free for the students, but they are accepting donations. That's 20, only $20 for a sign. So, if you're interested in donating for the signs, it's only $20 to be a sponsor to buy signs for the graduating seniors. Main Street Market is gonna be like, every week there's gonna be something, live music, moving the park, all kinds of things. It is like the one-stop destination that you need for every Friday, starting in June, June 13th, for the entire summer. You can always expect something to do, wonderful vendors, everything like that. And you guys put so much work into that and it's gonna be fantastic this year. It's gonna be very active and like an event every single time. So, I'm really impressed with that. But you guys are really just doing so much with the intention of, of course, encouraging everyone to come downtown, economic vitality, and then, of course, the connection that you're building. I already volunteered Lowry for the Historic Preservation Committee. I don't know if I told you that, but I did. And, yeah, yeah, but, oh, and then, Earth Day today, you guys had the Key Club there, Boys and Girls Club, all these. all these leaders in the making in our own community, serving their towns. I think that's wonderful. So thank you for everything that you guys are doing. I could talk all day about that.
Thank you. Mayor Proten?
Well, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Morris, really, really appreciate the presentation tonight. And congratulations on completing that 2025 accreditation with Main Street America. I, I was just recently speaking with President Peterson, who had attended that Main Street Now Conference with you. And I, I just want to say how appreciative I am of our Main Streets Program staff going above and beyond and taking the time to, you know, travel and represent our community and bring back some great ideas from Philadelphia. It's just, it's, it's, I love to see the effort and I really appreciate all the work and volunteer hours you guys put in. Just a, a lot of great programs. I think, you know, that Sign and Honing Grant is probably one of my favorites. It's, it's just awesome to see some of the projects that y'all put together, just deliver results in, in a way that you can see visibly, you know, impact our community. Just, just very cool stuff. And one last thing on that, I, they, that Walk of Fame program, that sounds really cool. I mean, what a cool project that, you know, can kind of show off some of our wonderful and talented students. I'm very excited to see how that goes. So just again, but just want to thank everybody that's helped, you know, make this program such a success over the years. And I just really appreciate it. So thank you guys very much.
Thanks, sir. Thank you for this quarterly report. This was, this is great. It's nice to see the progress being made, the things you guys are actually doing. Super excited about the Historic Preservation Committee. I, I like history. I think it's rather important. The C3 Committee, I think that's huge. Getting ahead of it as much as we possibly can, getting other people from the community that are going to be impacted to come together and brainstorm and have like think tanks on how we can get things solved. And before it potentially become an issue is, is going to be and is huge. St. Patty's Day was incredible. I went down there, tried to go to all the restaurants. And the wait time was so long, I was like, well, I'll just go. And I found a food truck. But that's the perfect problem to have. That's what we're looking for, right? Make them so full that, that they'll, they're going to be happy. Very excited about the Main Streets Market moving to Fridays. I think that's going to be much more impactful and probably maybe, or bring in more vendors or make it more interesting to them because of the foot traffic will be there, should be there, right? So I think that's a beautiful idea. Yeah, thank you very much for all you do and the board and all the volunteers. It's, it's huge. Without Main Streets, we wouldn't have such a beautiful downtown. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for the items on the consent agenda?
April 8th, 2025 Meeting Minutes, Resolution Number 16-2025, A Resolution of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, Making Appointments to the Planning Commission. Resolution Number 17-2025, A Resolution Adjusting Appropriations For the Town of Wellington, Colorado, For the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2025, And Ending December 31, 2025, And Approving a Services Contract with High Country Low Voltage. Resolution Number 18-2025, A Resolution of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, Canceling a Regular Meeting on June 24, 2025.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trusty Daly?
Yes.
Trusty Moyer?
Yes.
Trusty Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes?
Thank you. All right, on to action. And Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E1?
Resolution Number 19-2025, A Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, Approving a Purchase of a Utility Terrain Vehicle, UTV, for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Perfect. Thank you. We have Mr. Billy Cooksey, Parks and Rec Manager, presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees, both here and in the cloud. I'm in front of you tonight to request the approval for a purchase of a UTV, utility terrain vehicle, or as we call them, a turf cart, as a replacement for failing operational equipment the department is currently using. The Parks and Recreation Department has understood that replacing some of our equipment was necessary in the, in the next few years because some of them have been failing for previous seasons. Without a defined CIP plan, the goal has been to space out the purchases to avoid larger CIP hits for one specific year and also to spread them out to ensure better equipment cycling as we move through the years. So not all of the purchases are made in one year as a lump. There are two Parks and Recreation Department gators that need replaced. And one of them declined over this winter much quicker than anticipated due to harsh snow removal conditions a couple, a couple times. Continuing the reliance on both deteriorating pieces of equipment could cause safety and operational issues specifically now that it's a busy season for the Parks and Recreation Department. Staff rely heavily on the mobility and versatility of these vehicles every single day, which are used for sports field maintenance, regular parks maintenance and cleanup, recreation and town events, both setup and support, and also, as previously mentioned, snow removal operations. With the decline in both gators, staff will need to replace them as soon as possible. But purchasing one now is essential. The department manager has priced out multiple different UTV options for the replacement. Of these found, a direct replacement for a gator right now is the most fiscally responsible UTV that was found on the market. And it will ensure safe operations continue at a high level. You can find on pages 78 to 84 in the board packet, the quote for the gator that is Sourcewell approved. And the lead time on these units is about 60 days until they get delivered. The purchase of this replacement UTV was not included in the 2025 budget. So non-appropriated purchases over $10,000, according to the Town of Wellington Purchasing Policy, must be approved by the Board of Trustees. Due to the implementation of the 2025 Prose Master Plan and Community Center Feasibility Study Contract, the Parks and Recreation Department is not currently or actively appropriating minor park improvements until that master plan is completed. And that'll help us dictate where those resources should be allocated. So for the time being, we're not really pushing forward for allocation of those funds that are already in our operational budget because we want that master plan to help us dictate where those funds should be going, rather than continuing to make that decision or kind of the whole idea of the master plan. So it is the Parks and Recreation Department's proposal that the funds are, that the funds for the replacement UTV could be used or covered by the 2025 Park and Recreation Operational Budget Line, which is minor park improvements, if approved, for not to exceed amount of $28,783.48. I've added some information and statistics for you to read about the gators that we currently have and kind of helps illustrate the state that they've been in and are continuing to decline into. Those are on pages 75 and 76 of the board packet. That's all I have, so I'll stand for any questions regarding this item.
Thank you. Trusty Moore?
The reappropriation of the funds makes sense to me. Trust in your guidance. You know, if you say that you can make it work with that change, I am fully supportive of the purchase.
Trusty Wiegand?
I appreciate you finding money. I mean, that's big. We have, you know, we're going to be on a tight budget anyway. So I appreciate you making it work. Thank you.
Trusty Daly?
Sounds like really responsible decision, so thank you.
Mayor Proten?
Yeah, no, no questions. I, yeah, agree with the rest of the board. And yeah, obviously, you know, we, I think we all understand the need for operating equipment. So yeah, we definitely support this.
Yeah, need to have safe operating equipment, reliable equipment, especially when it comes to UTV.
Awesome. We will now open this up for public comment. Any members of the public wishing to speak will be given three minutes. Okay. Does the board wish to deliberate any further? Ms. Clerk, or do I hear a motion on this?
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 19-2025, A Resolution of Town of Wellington, Colorado, Approving the Purchase of a UTV for Parks and Recreation Department for not to exceed the amount of $28,783.48.
Second.
Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trusty Daly?
Yes.
Trusty Moyer?
Yes.
Trusty Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes?
Thank you. On to reports. Mr. Dan Zappino, he's a town attorney.
No report at this time.
Thank you, sir. Town Ministry, Ms. Garcia?
No report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All of the reports were in the packet. Any questions from the board on those? No? Okay. Or reports? Trusty Daly?
It was mentioned earlier, but I wanted to formally invite everybody to the Arbor Day Celebration this Saturday at Harvest Park, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. It's always a good time, fun stuff to do, and of course, celebrating trees. I love trees. Upcoming though, in May, you can expect Kids to Park Day, which is coordinating with Kiwanis, the fishing derby, which is again, is always a good time. This time too, we'll also be welcoming our, our new dock to the fishing ponds. I also wanted to commend the Kiwanis and the Key Club for doing a wonderful job of the Easter egg hunt. I've been seeing Key Club show up at everything. These are our volunteers within the Kiwanis organization that are in our high schools. They were today cleaning up on Earth Day. They were setting out eggs and cleaning up after the Easter egg hunt. These kids are very, very involved and I wanted to just compliment them for doing such a great job. So thank you to the Kiwanis Key Club. Mentioning the food bank from earlier, I do want to note, in case anybody wasn't sure, you can access the food bank on any weekday at the Wellington Middle High School, right after school drop off. And then also the first and third Thursday of the month at River of Life Church between 3:00 and 4:30. Hopefully in the near future, with the success of the Community Services Center, that will be available more and have more resources available too. So if you have not heard about that project, please do, for the Community Services Center. I mentioned earlier too, Walk of Fame sponsors are only $20. But I also wanted to thank Kelly of Thistle and Burt McCaffrey of Business Card Factory, who are really making the magic happen through graphic design and printing of the signs. So I think they were worth mentioning too, because they're really serving our entire town. So I really appreciate that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trusty Moore? Trusty Wiegand said no.
I don't have anything.
Mayor Proten?
No report today. I just wanted to obviously apologize for everybody for not being present here tonight. I'm on my first business trip in like five years. So apologize for not being there, but yeah, that's all.
Thank you for the apology. It's accepted. Okay. I don't have anything to report. The next item on the agenda would be the executive session. I would like to motion to postpone that to a date yet to be determined due to the fact that Megan is out sick. North Pooter meets tomorrow, next week. Either way.
In the future.
In the future. So without having any new news, there's no, no point for us to go into it, in my opinion. Do I have a second? Yes.
Second.
Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trusty Daly?
Yes.
Trusty Moyer?
You didn't clarify a date.
Yeah, a date to be determined.
Okay, yes.
Trusty Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes?
Thank you. Having no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
And now adjourn the regular meeting, time being 7:34 p.m.